Good evening. You have seven o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the row.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David?
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean?
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg?
Here.
Mr. Tom Schmitz?
Present.
And Mr. John Welch?
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. So this evening, we have Father Terry Hedrick with Church of the Resurrection to lead us in prayer. Father Hedrick.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, as the council of Bel Air meets again tonight, we begin this meeting by looking to you in the name of your son, Jesus. We thank you for your promise that when we look to you in his name, that you are present with us now by your Holy Spirit. So we continue to give you thanks that you are a good and gracious God, bounding in mercy, steadfast love and faithfulness. As we pray together and for one another, we pray, I pray specifically this night for the city of Bel Air, especially for Mayor Ben Minaj, city council members and all the leaders of this community, especially also for our first responders, law enforcement, EMS and our firefighters. Tonight, we pray together that you will reveal to the city council the knowledge of your will and all wisdom and spiritual understanding in order that they might be fruitful in their service for you. Anoint them with the spirit of wisdom, charity and justice that with steadfast purpose for the common good, they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people in the Bel Air community. Grant that they may love mercy, do justice and walk humbly with you. Finally, we remember the gospel that God was in Christ reconciling the world to himself. May each of us be ambassadors of that same spirit of reconciliation and peace. And now we ask all of this Father, in the strong and wonderful name of our Savior, Jesus, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God, both now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in pledging allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to determine agenda additions. Does anyone have any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, move on to the consent agenda. In addition to the minutes of the March 5th regular city council meeting and the March 11th special meeting, the consent agenda includes several other items related to developments. These include revised petitions for chapel landing sixth edition and acceptance of petitions for phase one of Skyview at Webb addition. Are there any questions or discussions concerning the consent agenda? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Motion to approve the consent agenda listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. David, a second by Mr. Dean. Any questions or discussions? I know we have some online, so it takes, gotta give them a few seconds to respond. There are no questions or discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, here's five ayes. Are there any nays? That motion call carries five to zero. Move on to discussion approval appropriations ordinance 2505. This appropriation ordinance encompasses expenses from February 26th through March 12th and one payroll cycle. Expenditures amount to $368,614 and some cents. Other reported expenses, $51,274 are infrastructure costs for new developments. And these costs are paid through special assessments. Any questions or discussions concerning the appropriation ordinance?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we approve appropriation ordinance number 25-05.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Mr. Welch. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 I hear five ayes, any nays? And then motion carries five to zero. So the city requested appearances, Mr. Barry Smith, our Director of Finance, here to talk about the 2026 budget calendar. And yeah, it's 2025, but we have to have this thing approved in August, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
So each year, I like to put together a calendar of dates where we outline everything we got to go through to get a budget passed for the city of Bel Air. So we start here in March, work all our way, all the way through September, when we hold our hearings to, for our revenue neutral rate and our adoption of our 2026 budget. Those days are outlined here. Most of them are at council workshops. I do want to point out on the September 2nd meeting, it says workshop, but that is an actual council meeting. Look at that. I'll get that fixed on there. Little typo. Yeah, I know we have a unique opportunity this year with the new ERP system and how we budget. We're basically starting from a completely blank slate. Every line item is at zero dollars. I've been meeting with each department on training them on how to use the new budget software within our ERP system. So each department's gonna go in individually, each line item, outline every single thing that they're gonna purchase. It'll all be detailed out item by item. So every membership, every publication, every office supplies that they're gonna want for 2026, it's gonna be detailed out in the budget. So it's really a zero-based approach this year, kinda how we're approaching it, really start from scratch and building it from the ground up essentially. And at every one of these workshops-
Do that every year. You should always do that every year, zero-based budgeting.
Well, now that I've been here one year so far, I can really dive in deeper and I have a little more history when it comes to all that, so I know if I'm on track or not with those numbers, so. Yeah. Stand for any questions? If not, thank you very much.
I appreciate that. Are you gonna be able to compare items to last year's budget based upon the new software? Will you be able to do that comparison?
Yep, I'll be able to compare 24. Any further than that, I'll have to break out the old Excel sheet. But for 24, there will be comparisons. It may look a little odd because we added some departments and divisions now that we have the new software. So rather than one lump sum of administration, it breaks it out into administration, finance, legal, engineering, those different departments. So it'll be much more detailed than in the past, for sure.
Good. Very good. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, move on to citizen concerns. Are there anyone here, any cards submitted? I did not see any. Say I see any citizens here, but move on to council member reports. So we'll start with Ms. Hamburg. Do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only thing I was gonna mention is that I attended the Senate County Associations of Cities meeting on Saturday, March 8. It was held at Dallas City Rec Center, so it was nice to see that, it just opened. The main speaker was Mr. Mark Clark, who is the county appraiser, not a very popular guy right now, but always, always helpful to understand the process. And, and we've had some robust discussions here about what's going on in Topeka and kinda how the process works. And we control the mill levy, but we're only 30% of your property tax, and you've got the school district at 36%, and Central County at 20%, and the fire district at 12%. And each of those control a part of your property tax, and so we've had a lot of inflation. As hard as it is to believe, a lot of times these appraisal numbers are not that far off. But always just remind citizens that we're still in that window to protest. If you do, you know, believe that your property is legitimately overvalued, and I have a post on my Facebook page with that information, you can go to the county's website for that process. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Welch?
I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Schmitz?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Mr. Dean?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a few things. Thank you. It's been a busy March already, so bear with me. I've got a few items here. So last report, I did report that I attended the KDOT Transportation Safety Conference. That was actually over a three-day period, so I attended a day and a half after our last meeting. And I felt it was very useful information. I know there was a lot of jurisdictions there from across the state, I mean, everybody from, you know, KDOT, KTA, Kansas Highway Patrol, city public works folks, as well as a lot of consultants, a lot of engineers that serve those agencies. And one of the biggest things I took away was their new safe systems approach to designing, it's a lot of different things, so I wanna list off a couple. What they define safe systems approach is a comprehensive approach to tackling the issue with fatalities on roads. And so it incorporates a lot of things, things like safer people, safer vehicles, safer speeds, safer roads, and then post, what they call post-crash care. So anyway, that was one of many things that were presented on during the conference. There was a number of other things. But I would highly recommend anybody that hasn't attended it, that is interested in safety on the roadways, to do that in the, in the future. Then on March 7th, I attended the Smart Growth Cities Champions Institute kickoff. It was just a virtual call, those will be virtual. So I'm excited for that to begin. Also, I attended a WAMPO Safe Routes to School planning kickoff with the selected consultant team of SRF, Ulta and Shaki. I was glad to see there was several community partners that have been engaged in that process, USD 259, and there was actually a Bel Air citizen was engaged on that call. So it was just really, really great to see that level of engagement early on in that planning process. And then I attended the Bel Air Chamber Mixer, which was last week. I think it's kinda neat that they're looking for new creative ways to get more engagement. And so they're gonna start having networking events, a couple, at least throughout the year in the evenings. It was at Taps and Paddles. And it was a great event, so I appreciate the Bel Air Chamber for putting that on. And then I had on the 14th, so a few days late last week, I attended our first K254 Corridor Association Steering Committee meeting. And I'm excited to help us stay more organized and plan for future, future meetings through that new steering committee. And then the last thing, I promise, I attended the South Central Kansas Transportation Coalition meeting, which was today at the Wichita Chambers office. And we talked about, WAMPO did a presentation on their MTP 2050. Pete Meitzner updated everybody on the passenger rail. And there was some initial discussion on the regional project priorities and how we're gonna tier those. So look, look forward to staying involved in that process as that moves towards KDOT local consults later this fall. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. David?
Mr. Mayor, I also attended that Bel Air Area Chamber of Commerce mixer. And well, it was informal, but we had a nice discussion about them growing outside the city of Bel Air, getting some of those neighbor businesses involved. And so I hope they can do that, and I hope that can really add to their growth and cut our subsidy eventually. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. We'll move on to Mayor's report. So a few items, not terribly extensive. On March 6th, I held, we held a special CCU meeting and approved a bond resolution. Appropriate documents were submitted to Bel Air and Park City councils, city councils, which on March 11th, they're in, each council approved those resolutions, respective resolutions. So the bond's been submitted to the Attorney General for review and approval, and we will also receive the proposed contract from BRB Construction. And this is in review, final approval of the bond documents and construction contracts should occur on March 27th at the CCU meeting. On March 8th, I attended the Central County Association of Cities, as Ms. Hamburg also said she attended. The counterpraiser did a good review of the work they do and how they try to be fair with appraisal of properties. They did remind us, as Ms. Hamburg also said, that there is an appeal process if one feels their appraisal is out of line. But those need to be done, filed within the next couple of weeks, so time, clock is ticking on that. We also discussed ways the county and cities could work better together with focus on property taxes in Topeka. We need to find ways to eliminate duplication where that makes sense. However, I'm cautiously optimistic about this. Not every idea or consideration is a good idea. As an example, I do not believe a consolidation of parks and park maintenance makes any sense. A large organization runs the risk of Bel Air parks not getting attention Bel Air citizens expect. But I do hope we can be more corroborative where that makes sense. On March 12th, I attended the Utility Advisory Commission meeting. They put together the annual report and thoughts on what they would like to accomplish in 2025. I asked that they consider revising the water conservation plan for 2026 to incorporate some of the ideas of the meeting. Water restrictions placed upon us by Wichita through the rebalance of water we get from Wichita versus CCU. Also asked that they look at the possibility of composting and whether that makes sense for Bel Air. Garbage leaves, grass clippings, and all, all can be composted. And today, they are sent to the landfill. In the case of much, in the case of much garbage, it is ground up in the garbage disposal and sent to the sewer line to be put out of the water, to be pulled out of the water at CCU and put back on farmland. So an expensive process that one, and one where we can reduce a lot of effort as a community. Yesterday, on March 17th, I testified in Topeka against HRC 5011, which is a property appraisal constitutional amendment to restrict growth of property appraised values. This is a do-nothing proposal. The Senate committee gutted the House proposal and inserted SCR 1603, which is the Senate's version of the same idea. If passed and implemented, everyone will see that it makes no difference in their property taxes. So the proposal is basically a shell game. And I am happy to share the text of my testimony to anyone who wishes. I also testified against HB 2396, as this bill attempts to restrict the budget growth of cities and counties by the rate of inflation. While on the surface, that sounds like a good idea, it will cause growing cities like Bel Air to provide less service to our citizens. As an example, if the city grows by 1,000 people, we could not add police officers due to the rate of inflation issue. The current officers would have to cover a larger area and more people. There were multiple issues with this bill. I understand it was a very substantially changed day, but I do not know the specifics of those changes. So I'll now ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In line with legislation, the legislature is still busy, a very busy time. There are a few bills that we are monitoring. One of them is Senate Bill 70. It talks about CORA, the Kansas Open Records Act, and COMA, the Kansas Open Meetings Act. One of the aspects that is interesting about this bill is if we have a CORA request, we charge a fee, a reasonable fee for paper copies. But there's no real guidance if we were to provide it in some type of an electronic format, electronic copies of the records. This bill actually gives us some guidance on what a reasonable fee would be, so that's helpful. The League of Kansas Municipalities even made a comment that they appreciated that guidance because it's been unclear in the past. Senate Bill 70 also talks about COMA. Sometimes, many times, a governing body will leave for an executive session. It may end early, or it may go a little late. Technically, those would be considered COMA violations. This Senate bill takes that into account, that sometimes a governing body or a public agency will be, they will, in a five-minute period, end early or go over, and that would not be considered a COMA violation. There were examples provided such as sometimes it takes time to get individuals back onto a camera for Zoom, or maybe it takes time to be seated and everyone's leaving the room. Those, it's nice to have that little bit of a buffer. So Senate Bill 70, we're waiting to hear from that. There's also another Senate Bill 242 involving contingency fee contracts. And this, it'll be interesting to see what happens by Friday of this week. This specific bill requires cities to submit any contract for legal services on a contingency fee basis to the Attorney General's Office for review and approval. The League of Kansas Municipalities reviewed that, and they opposed the bill as a limit on local control and the freedom for cities, municipalities to contract. Understanding that the Attorney General's Office has a position and a need to coordinate and facilitate any type of public interest litigation for the civilians, the residents of Kansas, on behalf of the state, but perhaps there's a way to tweak that. So I believe that the LKM is working with the Attorney Generals to make some potential amendments to see what happens. There have been so many contingency fee basis agreements out and becoming more popular. I think that our, our city even had one recently with Safer, the Coalition with Lights. And there's been a lot of talk about PFAs, how that will be handled. So I think that's probably just a little bit of the background for this bill. But those are a few that we're taking a look at, and I will share an update with council once those are finalized.
Very good. Thank you. I know the session is wrapping up and it's gonna go lightning fast in the next week and a half. So there'll be changes by the minute going on there. So anyway, ready to move on to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. So I put together a little fun, little map of as weather warms up, we're starting to talk about projects we have for 2025. And I tried to identify several of them that are gonna be going on. And we'll go, go through a few of them. First ones, let's get this thing to work here. Our street maintenance project has already been bid out. Apex is ready to go. And we're just working on a pre-construction meeting. That's gonna happen primarily over here. Parkwood project, where we're turning gravel road into a paved road. They're gonna start back up on April 1st to shaping up some ditches. And then Donlenger will start on April 15th, replacing some additional culverts. And then once the culverts have been replaced and the ditch is cleaned up, Kansas paving will come back and start earthwork that starts the paving project. As you know, Eagle Lake Park is getting new equipment and probably we'll, we'll start discussing where we're gonna relocate the volleyball court soon. As you know, Woodlawn's gonna have some temporary improvements, and then as we work through the process with PEC to get a concept for the permanent improvements. 45th Street is getting redesigned as we speak. We're gonna have a new bridge started, two new bridges started this summer to avoid any school closing, you know, while schools are in session. That's similar to the sidewalk along 53rd Street. As we're talking about it, Marty's gonna put out an RFP for three new water lines located kinda near the rec center for this summer, as well as manhole rehabs. There's about 15 manholes that we're gonna work on this summer as well. All that with, remember Skyview, the area over there, we're gonna look at putting a new park in Skyview. Those construction plan designs will come before council to get a kinda final approval before we go off for bid with pricing. And then the big cherry on top is our public works facility in Sunflower Commerce Park. That's, should have groundbreaking April 1st. So as you can tell, we got a lot on the schedule for this summer, and that's just the baseline of projects. That doesn't include any priorities that might come up over the next few months. But I think it's pretty fitting to share this as we start talking budget, because when you talk budget, we kinda have a baseline budget we're talking about. And then we have any other needs that the city and city council has, and this is kind of our baseline priorities. Oh yeah, I forgot, we also have five other commercial properties going up at the same time, as well as all the developments and housing that we have. So as a city staff person, this is what I see when I look at the map this summer, and as you can tell, we're gonna be busy. So with that, just, I can answer any questions you have, but wanted to just kinda set the scene for as we enter the summer and construction months.
Well, it looks like a very busy summer and a lot of good projects there, but in addition to those, we have private developments as well. These are all the public infrastructure projects, so they're going on.
Yeah, slide, slide two up there, I tried to pinpoint the majority of the, so the little buildings in Sunflower Commerce Park are the private ones.
Right, right.
And then the ones in yellow are kinda where our development is heading.
Right, yeah, very good. So, well, we'll move on to ordinance resolution and the final action. So the first item is a development agreement that outlines developers' responsibilities for and during and after construction of an addition. And developers agreed to these terms. And this developer is for the development of Skywood at Webb addition. And the agreement now comes for the council for final approval, and I believe Ms. And I believe Ms. Paula Downs is here to help us understand this or enlighten us a little more about it.
If you recall, Mayor and Council, in December, you all had a case. This was a zoning case that you all approved for single-family homes in this area. As a follow-up to that, the next item will be the final plat for this development. So as part of that final plat, we brought to you a development agreement for the infrastructure, which, as you know, the agreement is necessary to address the financial infrastructure and draining conditions to ensure that necessary improvements are in place to support that development as it comes online. So the approval of the agreement is a condition precedent to final consideration of the final plat. So we have reviewed it. Staff has confirmed that the agreement addresses all of the required elements for Skyview at Webb Edition development. And we're recommending approval of the developer's agreement.
Good. Thank you. Are there any questions or concerns related to this developer's agreement for Ms. Downs to answer? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Motion to approve an agreement concerning the development of Skyview at Webb Edition in addition to the City of Bel Air, Kansas and authorize the mayor to sign.
And I can second it.
I have a motion by Mr. David and I believe a second from Mr. Schmidt.
Correct.
Any other, any other questions or discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 I hear five ayes, but are there any nays? That motion carries five to zero. Move on to item B, which I think is related to the item A. At the, at the December meeting, the Bel Air Planning Commission reviewed and approved the preliminary plat for Skyview at Webb Edition. A final plat was submitted by the developer and reviewed by city staff, utility companies, and local emergency services. Following review, the final plat was revived, reviewed, and approved by the planning commission at their meeting in January 2025. Now the city council considered, accepted a dedication to public streets, utility easements as they are presented in the final plat. And again, Ms. Paula Downs, our Director of Community Development is here to answer any questions.
Just a little acclamation about where this is. This, it's generally located just south of 53rd Street off of Webb on the west side. It's intended to be a 69 single-family home development with five commercial lots that face or sit on the Webb entry point. That has not been presented yet, only the residential plat. So you can see here that on Webb Road, you have the five commercial lots. And then of course, the 69 lots behind that. To the north is the North Rock Springs Fourth Edition. On the west side is Skyview at Block 49, Second Edition. And to the south is the Skyview Third Edition, which were the storage units or storage buildings that we have there. Just a little bit of history. It was originally the applicant submitted a preliminary plat for the 69 lots. The planning commission approved it in December. Then they also submitted a final plat for the 69 lots. It was approved by planning commission on January 9th. You all received and approved the zoning case, which rezoned it from a C1 neighborhood commercial to an R5 garden and patio homes, townhouses, and condominium uses. And so here we are with the final plat. It conforms to the approved preliminary plat and includes all of the elements that were requested. The development agreement, of course, addresses everything financially to ensure that the development is, and improvements are in place to support the development. We've reviewed the agreement and then the staff is recommending approval of the final plat at this time.
So correct me if I misunderstood this. You said these are now zoned R5, but they're going to be single-family homes.
Correct.
Isn't that kind of not an R5?
Well, it's, you know what, you're catching me. Let me just stay here. It's R5 garden and patio homes, townhomes and condominium uses. So these are single-family, they're not duplexes, they're not multifamily, but they are garden patio home style homes. That's why it fits into the R5 category.
But they're individual buildings.
Correct.
They're not attached in any way to another building.
They're single standalone developments.
You just caught me by surprise. You said single-family homes and R5.
Yeah, garden and patio home definition.
Okay, very good. Well, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Downs?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David. A motion to accept the dedications within the Skyview at Webb Edition and authorize all required signatures.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. David, a second by Mr. Welch. Any other questions or discussions? If there are none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 I hear five ayes. Are there any nays? Hearing none, that motion passes five to zero. On item C, Developer Chapel Landing 6 is ready to move forward with the construction of water, sewer, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and paving improvements to support the subdivision. The cost of the improvements for these projects will be financed through a bond and spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots. So city engineer Ann Stevens is here to discuss the bidding process and answer any questions. Ms. Stevens.
So these bids were accepted quite, or not accepted, but taken quite a while ago, back kind of late last year. And the bids came in significantly over the engineer's estimate. So the developer asked to hold the bids for a while. They've finally decided to get up and start moving forward with this. And we received a call from Baughman to see whether it would be acceptable for them to negotiate with the lowest bidder, which was Mies for the concrete paving option, No-Walk for the asphalt option. Since the concrete was only 8% higher than the asphalt option, Baughman assumed that the council would go ahead and choose that concrete option. So they started negotiating with Mies. Austin Gottlob is here with Baughman Associates. If you guys have any questions for him regarding the specific negotiations. Mies did say that they would hold their price, which is the 2119, 499. And there was a few other additional concessions that they had agreed. One was the timing of the, of the improvements. I think it went from 90 to 120 days. But that was, those were all acceptable to the developer. So now the bids are before you. And if you have any questions, either myself or Austin will be able to answer those.
One question, I just want to make sure that we're being above board and we're being fair to all the bidders because it's been some time. And usually those bids have a certain time limit to them. Were any of the other bidders given the opportunity to refresh their bid or, or say, yeah, but no? Or any of those kind of things?
We had talked about that and it is typically not good practice to rebid a project that has not substantially changed.
Right.
Because the contractors usually kind of understand and generally honor everybody else's bid. So because of that, because the project had not substantially changed, nobody else was given the opportunity. We have in previous situations from my tenure here in Bel Air, we have negotiated with the lowest bidder when they have come in a little over budget and kind of trying to make this project work. So we do have the history of doing that. It's not, it doesn't happen very frequently, mainly when the project is significantly over budget.
Well, I appreciate the, the effort there to try to get a better, a better deal. I just want to make sure that we have been above board with it, not
Sure.
not undercut somebody because we offered. And I realize the timing, usually the timing means prices go up. It doesn't mean they go down. But sometimes you're surprised.
Exactly.
And, and so I just want to make sure that, that everybody feels like they've been treated fairly.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
Oh, I had to add to that discussion a little bit. So from my viewpoint, what typically happens on rebids is the other contractors either A, do not bid, or B, hold their price. So with that, like that's generally what happens on a rebid. And it's usually just sort of the, you know, agreement that if you got the project, you deserve the project. So if they're going to negotiate it, then you should get it. So anyway, from my perspective, that's sort of how the industry has looked at it in general. So I, I don't feel uncomfortable that the city is losing an opportunity to take bids from these contractors in the future. I think that's just sort of a, an expectation of trying to make a project move forward. I appreciate you working that out. It is extremely above the engineer's estimate. So I don't know, you know, the, all the ins and outs and details of what caused that. But it looks like we had three bidders, so at least we had a competitive bid situation. So.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion?
Yes, sir.
I believe you said that they were going to stick to the 2,119,000 figure, but didn't they agree to a lower figure of 1,900 something?
Yes, I apologize. I misstated that. There was a revised bid that is, that is included in your packet for 1,996, 499.15. I apologize and thank you for catching that, Mr. Welch. That would be the real number, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greg.
David. A motion to accept the bid from Mies Construction for concrete paving and water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer improvements to serve Chapel Landing 6th Edition in the amount not to exceed 1,996,499.15. Authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
Second.
A motion by Mr. David and a second by Mr. Welch. Any other questions or discussions? If there are none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Five ayes. Are there any nays? That motion carries five to zero. Move on to item D. Through in October of 2030, 2024, Cedric County Board of County Commissioners passed resolutions requesting Bel Air and 10 other area cities to annex certain roads right of way. So Cedric County's Resolution 2223-2024 requests the City of Bel Air to annex certain highways that have a common boundary with the city limits of the City of Bel Air, Kansas. KSA 12-520E requires cities to annex highways to its city limits when the county passes a resolution that requires the city to annex highways into the city limits of that city, which have a common boundary with the city. A copy of the resolution and a copy of the map showing where the highways are located are included in the packet. Is there any other explanation needed about this issue? I know we've talked about this quite a bit.
Yeah, and I'd like to voice some concerns, whether they've been made before or not. I believe that this is an illegal activity because the state has usurped our right to self-determination, our right to negotiate contracts. They forced and added expense on us. And the last thing, why would we even vote on an ordinance if we don't have a choice but to vote one way?
Very, very good points. I understand. I'm not in a position to make a comment about it myself, so, but I appreciate your, your comments.
I understand. I just wanted to get that on the record that I'm not happy about this ordeal.
And Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, I also, when they came, the spokesperson for the county, when they first discussed this, they implied it wasn't definitive that we had to accept annexation of the road when it's shared on both sides, which seems fair and equitable. So evidently something changed or there's a new statute that somebody hadn't read before. So, so I don't like this either. I think it's kind of like a little bit over the top. But it seems like we don't have a choice now.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments as well. Do, does the city attorney have anything to say?
I think Councilmember Schmitz is probably referring to Mr. Lynn Packer, who attended our council meeting and gave a presentation. I don't remember what specifically he said about what the next step for Bel Air was. All I can do is just provide legal advice based upon the Kansas statute. And this specific subsection that is being used by the county, it does not give an option for council to have a discussion about shared costs of the roadway or even for Cedric County to be required to engage in a discussion. In fact, when I go back to statute, it just simply states, after the county makes their notification, the next sentence is, is the governing body shall. Shall is a very powerful word. It's telling that the city shall certify by ordinance that the certification is correct. So if anything, there was to disagree about, it would be whether or not the description of the roadway was correct. But from what I understand, looking at the roadway, talking to staff, there's been no issue that those roads meet the description as provided by the county.
Thank you. So any other questions, comments, or discussion?
Mr. Mayor. Maybe it was also that same presentation of Mr. Packer, but I thought I remembered certain maintenance being offered to Bel Air. And now I don't see that anywhere in writing. Is, is that captured anywhere?
I do not believe it is unless the city manager can enlighten us.
It wasn't on the letter. Let's see if it was or not. It wasn't on the letter for Chairman Beatty, but I know that they are going to do that preservation treatment that will preserve that stretch of roadway for an estimated seven years to give the city time to get ready for the continued maintenance.
It was a full mill and overlay, wasn't it? It wasn't just a preservation.
Yeah, I might be using, using different adjectives, but yeah.
Yeah.
I know there's a big difference there. I know there's a big difference there. I just meant like they're going to do work.
Mr. Packer had said that and it's on our, on our record that he actually said that.
So at least we have many minutes and that will be done after the annexation.
Correct.
It's their intent.
I believe 20, Ann, do you remember what he, 2026, I believe?
I don't think it was supposed to be this year.
Sorry, I should, I should have looked at Ann first.
No, I believe you're correct because their maintenance schedule for '25 is already set this year.
And they're just, just playing with ideas here. I'm not going to make the motion, but there is always the option of making the motion contingent upon.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr.
Just to further clarify that, so the, the offer that they made with the seven-year mill and overlay, whatever, I assume that was for all these roads, all the locations that were identified. So I know one, one of the roads, it was both sides, one road, it was partial.
Yes.
Was it the entire road for that stretch? Do you recall?
Yeah, if you open the packet, the 168, it's the two and three. So it's all Webb Road, the half or the half mile, where the exhibits are, Webb Road. There was nothing, nothing talked about on the small stretch. I mean, it's barely even a stretch on rock.
So there is a bridge to be redone on Rock this summer? Have we approached this county about that?
Not yet.
Okay.
I will.
Okay, very good.
I know, and, and I don't know if the sidewalk project, have they, have they signed up for that yet? Or is that, should we not, the inspection?
The inspection, that is still in discussion. They were very strongly leaning towards it. They were just kind of working with KDOT as far as how many days KDOT had plugged in for that project to take, just to make sure that they have the staff available.
Okay. That hasn't gone the bid yet.
That is correct.
And I talked in half sentences, we'll, we'll clarify. So we're doing a So we're doing a KDOT sidewalk project. If you remember any other KDOT project, we have to pay for the inspectors, uh, to come out. And we, Anne and I had a nice meeting with Mr. Packer, and they provide some of those types of services for pretty much at their cost, so much lower rate. So that's another way we can leverage our relationship with the county to save taxpayers' money.
Any other questions or discussions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
A motion to adopt an ordinance annexing the three tracts of land as described in Cedric County Resolution two-two-three dash two zero-two-four into the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign contingent upon certain maintenance agreements as being presented by Mr. Parker and negotiated between Mr. Parker and Mr. Henry.
That's all I got right. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. David, uh, to adopt contingent upon, um, creation of a maintenance agreement between Mr. Park, Packer and Mr. Henry. Do we have a second?
All second.
A motion and a second by Mr. Dean. And this will be a roll call vote, so is there any other questions or discussion?
And Mr. Mayor, may I just make a brief comment, please?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure the council was aware, with this being a statutory obligation, and once this is approved or not by the council, there is no mechanism to undo what is being done. And, and the only reason I mention that is because of the contingency language.
Okay. Okay, so let's talk through that just, just momentarily, uh, with the contingency language. So I would not be properly advised to sign this until that agreement was put together for the, for the maintenance. Is that true?
If this is approved, and I'm not saying it will be, I'm just saying if it were, uh, then that means today the, uh, ordinance would be following through with what is requested by the county, that the annexation ordinance would be certifying the resolution from the county. There is no requirement that they enter into this agreement with Mr. Henry or Bel Air. And even if they do not, this, the, the annexation will be successfully completed, the certified, and then also the declaration, um, boundary resolution, that those three stracks, those three tracts of land would thereby become part of Bel Air. And then Bel Air would have the statutory duty to update the map and follow through with the resolution as soon as possible, not even by December thirty-first, but by as soon as possible, the boundary resolution.
So you're, just in different words, and I don't want to be putting words in your mouth, if this is incorrect, please tell me. So what you're saying is, it doesn't matter about this contingency. We approve this, this ordinance as motion with the contingency, the contingency language doesn't really matter.
With this being a statutory obligation, it, it would continue, and it, the city of Bel Air would effectively be agreeing and certifying the resolution. If, if the city of Bel Air were to not follow through and not certify, then there is always going to be that potential where the county could seek relief in district court in order to ask the city of Bel Air to comply with statute.
If, if, if this helps any, I just pulled up the email from Mr. Packer, and he, he said, um, our plan is call for a five-eighths overlay of Nova Chip, which is, uh, Nova Chip, Anne might be able to spoke of that. Says in twenty-twenty-five, but this, this letter, this, uh, email's dated twenty-twenty-four, so I imagine it's twenty-twenty-six. And we can certainly commit that to writing, period. So there is a
There's commitment.
There's a commitment to do it in writing, it's just not present at the moment, so if that makes, gives anybody comfort.
Well, we do have a motion on, on the floor, um, with a contingency in it. We've heard the, uh, attorney's opinion of the contingency and its effect. If we, I can call for a vote, or if we want to have some more discussion, Ms. Hamburg.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, so either, either the attorney or the city manager, do you think we should just remove that language from both a legal standpoint and/or sort of a, a relationship standpoint, um, since it's kind of indifferent? Um, or, or for the city attorney, is it okay that we leave it in there to sort of make a statement, but knowing it, it's not really binding on them or us?
Yeah, I think, I think, let me see if I can help, because you're coming through, but it's, it's not real clear. So if I understand you correctly, Ms. Hamburg, you're saying that, um, that in light of the, the letter, we could, um, approve this, knowing the contingency is, is maybe just moot? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Is there any downside to just approving Councilmember David's motion? Or should we amend it since it's really a moot point anyway?
Okay, so is there any downside to approving the motion as presented?
It would be, it would be cleaner to just make, follow the motion as it is written because it complies with the phraseology from statute. And I don't know, I don't know what else there would be other than the fact that council's going in, understanding that the county is not required or obliged to, and has already in their own way suggested that they just want this particular aspect completed without any other attached agreements.
Okay. Let me ask you a parliamentary question. Am I allowed to make a motion on this, I am?
Per our council meeting rules of order, which are dated as of July twenty-twenty, it's only for charter ordinances or zoning matters. And in this matter, we do have it classified as zoning, so you could.
This is not a charter ordinance.
We have it, we have it as zoning. I believe, wait, hold on a second, I'm sorry. Yes, we've classified this as a zoning matter, and we've also put a roll call on it. Item D, correct, yes.
So I am allowed to make a motion on this, okay? Okay, so in the spirit of the fact that we have the letter from Mr. Packer, uh, I want to help foster that relationship, I don't want to hurt that relationship. So I'm gonna make a motion, a sub-motion, to adopt an ordinance annexing the three tracts of land as described in Cedric County Resolution two-two-three dash twenty-twenty-four into the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr.
I just want to ask a procedural question. We did have a motion and a second. Did we need to vote on that before we do, uh?
This is a sub-motion. Sub-motions can
Sorry, I missed.
Sub-motions take precedent.
Okay, just to make sure.
They take precedent if I, if I get a second. I don't have a second yet. So I do need to ask if there's a second to the sub-motion.
I'll second.
I have a second for Ms. Hamburg. And so if there's any other discussion on the sub-motion, if not, I will ask our city clerk to please call the roll for the sub-motion.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Greg David?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Emily Hamburg?
Aye.
Mr. Tom Schmitz?
Aye.
Mr. John Welch?
May.
And Ms., and, excuse me, Mayor Jim Benage?
Aye.
And the motion carries, um, six, excuse me, five to one, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. And that, that squashes the original motion, so we can move on to item E. Thank you. So item E is a resolution declaring the entire boundary of the city of Bel Air, Kansas. So, uh, when the new land is annexed into the city, state statute requires city to adopt a resolution declaring new boundaries of the city. The required resolution is included in your packet. And so this basically just incorporates what we just annexed into the boundaries of, of the cities.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
A motion to adopt the resolution declaring the entire boundary of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. David, a second by Mr. Dean. Any discussion? Here are none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 I hear five ayes, are there any nays? Here are none, motion carries five to zero. Move on to item F, consider an ordinance relating to illegal camping. So in January workshop, the city council reviewed and discussed an ordinance related to illegal camping in Bel Air. And the city attorney took the recommendations and drafted the ordinance before us tonight, and our city attorney is available to answer questions. I do want to thank you for the work you put into this. I know it's been a little bit, uh, interesting, and so, um, thank you for, for all that you've done there. Uh, we've gone back and forth on a couple things, but we got there, so, I think we did. We haven't, we haven't approved it yet, so I don't know. Any questions or discussion for the camping ordinance? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion. I'm not hearing anyone volunteering a motion either.
The discussion in relation to solicitation on the streets is going to be separate from this, is that correct?
That, that is correct.
I guess I'm not familiar with the discussion about solicitation on the streets.
Mr. Mayor, at our workshop, there was a discussion, I, I'm sorry, let me rephrase. Prior to the workshop, I was posed a question about could this ordinance take into account individuals who go up to vehicles and impede the flow of traffic by asking for some type of, um,
Oh.
a gift, whether it's money or an item. And I had suggested at the workshop that it not be included in this ordinance, but a separate ordinance.
So this is an item you're still working on?
Correct.
All right, I thought, I don't remember that, but okay, I kind of remember a little bit of discussion like that, but okay. Thank you for clarifying that. So to your, answer your question, Mr. Schmidt, this does not include that issue, but that is still on her plate to, to address.
Right, thanks. I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance related to illegal camping as presented and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mr. Schmidt, I believe a motion from Mr. Welch. I think I had another one as well, but, okay. Um, any other questions or discussion? There are none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 I hear five ayes, are there any nays? And that motion carries five to zero. So we do not have any need for executive session, she'll skip over that unless somebody has a burning desire for one. Okay, so we'll go on to item thirteen. Um, there is a, an email I received, uh, earlier today from Mayor Ashley Coleman of Keachai to, uh, consider proclamation to Child Prevention Month in April. Um, I don't have a strong feeling on this one way or the other, so I thought, well, this is an opportunity to just discuss that among the council and see what you, what your feelings are. And I did send it out to everybody, to all council members, so they could have a chance to review the, the proposed proclamation. So if anybody has any comments, concerns, or questions, please, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I hope I'm, I'm coming through, um, okay. Um, yeah, it's no secret how I feel about, about proclamations. Um, in twenty-twenty-two, I, I shared during workshop that I thought the ideal amount of proclamations that Bel Air was issuing as a city, um, is zero. Um, and this is kind of a great example of it. Um, you know, obviously, I'm not pro-child abuse. There's some, there's maybe in the city that, you know, is, you know, objects to this on, on those grounds. Um, but, but, you know, if we, if we go through with it, um, based on, you know, as a, as a favor, or as, as something we're doing, um, uh, based on, uh, Mayor Coleman's request, you know, where, where is the line? Um, you have to have a line somewhere. Um, it's actually, I think to DUC, uh, I don't know if they outtalk, um, there was a committee where they wanted to create another, uh, state holiday, and, and this was brought up, you know, where, where do you draw the line? Um, I think particularly as a municipality. Um, these are kind of things we should try to stay out of. I know sometimes we, we, we can't help it, we try to be neutral, and, and being neutral in this kind of culture war environment doesn't always work out. We've had that discussion, um, regarding what we call our, our Christmas slash holiday event, and what we call our, our festivals. Um, but, um, uh, I, I would just be in favor of, of just foregoing this, uh, for the same reasons. But I've always opposed, uh, proclamation, so, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your comments, I, I kind of, not surprised, because I remember your comments from previous discussion in, in workshops about that. So thank you. Anyone else have anything they would like to say?
I tend to agree with Emily. I, I'm not sure what value we're actually adding. If we want to do something to support this movement, uh, it seems like something more in line with the Bel Air Breeze, or the Facebook page, or something like that, that we could promote this rather than doing it in a more formal setting.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything they would like to voice? Here are none, I, I, um, I will try to summarize what I've heard and, uh, send that to, uh, Mayor Coleman, and so that she'll know the feelings of the, the council on this. Thank you for your input. Move on to item fourteen.
Well, Mayor Benage, I got one more future items.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So I'm working with the contractor on a groundbreaking for the new public works facility. Um, I, I suggest that, um, we, right now it's looking like April first, which is a council meeting, next council meeting night. Um, I think maybe we schedule it for a rec. Um, I think maybe we schedule it for, my recommendation would be schedule it for like six thirty. Go out there, take a picture of a groundbreaking, come back, start the meeting. As far as like a public event, I would prefer to build the building, have a public opening, grand opening, and give them a tour of the new facility, and we can have cookies and refreshments there. I've been to quite a few groundbreakings, I know you have as well, and it's kind of, it's, it's hard situat-, you know, you're just sitting out in the middle of a field. So I think, but I do think there's a good photo uh opportunity, different things we need to do. So if there's no objection to that plan, that's what I'll move forward with, the scheduling of that, and then if you're able to make it, come, come by at six thirty and we'll take a quick picture and then come back to City Hall.
So you're gonna do it six thirty on April first?
Yeah, I know, April first. Been getting that a lot this year.
Okay. And you'll send out notice about that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give plenty of notice to everyone, once I confirm it with. I, I just wanted to talk to you guys first before we confirmed.
Well, it's still daylight at six thirty now. Okay. Anybody have any comments or concerns with that plan? Hopefully the wind will die down by then. Okay. All right. Didn't mean to cut you, cut off the discussion. Is there any other issue that anybody would like to bring to council for discussion? All right. If not, we can move on to item fourteen, adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. David. Any second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Dean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
I hear five ayes. Any opposed? It's too bad if you are, we're gonna leave, so that motion carries five to zero. Everybody have a good, good evening, and we will see you on April.